Hammond City Council Meeting is now called to order. Will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation given by Councilman Higginson?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Heavenly Father, we come before you just saying thank you, Lord, for another day. Lord, we know the blood still works, Lord. We ask that you cover us with the blood. Keep us, Lord, so that we can do what's necessary for our great city. We ask you to be in the midst of this meeting, to guide us and direct us. Show us the way, Lord. We ask for all these blessings in your son, Jesus' name, we pray. Amen. Councilman Markovich.
I would just like to say thirty-six years ago today, my father passed away, and I'd just like to have a moment of silence. My parents and father were involved with everybody else's campaigning up for this. I was growing up as a kid, and they were never around, he was never around to participate in my own campaign, so I would just like a moment of silence representing my father. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman Markovich. First item on the agenda was Pledge of Allegiance, second is roll call. Roll call.
Markovich.
Here.
Pasalic.
Here.
Spitali.
Calwinski.
Here.
Salinas.
Here.
Poland.
Here.
Opinker.
Here.
Henosa.
Here.
Higgs.
Here.
Let the record reflect, eight present and one absent. Number three on the agenda is reading of the minutes. Reading of the minutes.
Mr. President.
Councilman Opinker.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes from four eleven eleven.
Second. It's been motioned by Councilman Opinker, second by Councilman Calwinski, that we accept the minutes as read. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Any discussion on the minutes? Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nay? Motion passed. Number four on the agenda is approval of claims. Approval of claims.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Move for approval of claims dated April sixth through April twentieth. For council meeting April twenty-fifth, two thousand and eleven, beginning with claims dated four eleven and ending with claims dated four twenty. Claim number seventeen oh seven through claim number one nine nine one. I so move.
Second. It's been motioned by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Calwinski, that we accept claims dated from April sixth, two thousand and eleven, through April twentieth, two thousand and eleven, for council meeting scheduled April twenty-fifth, two thousand and eleven, starting with claim seventeen oh seven and ending in claim nineteen sixty-two. Is there any discussion to the claims?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Would you say nineteen sixty-two? I believe there was an additional sheet that was added to the claim.
Here's my additional sheet.
I mentioned, Mr. Chairman, that was claim number one nine nine one.
Okay, claim starting at seventeen oh seven and ending in the new claim sheet, which was given today, nineteen ninety-one. Is there any discussion on the claim?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Additional two claims. Claim number one nine nine two, Hammond Hurricanes, four hundred dollar donation for the Hammond Hurricanes Youth Basketball. Claim number one nine nine three, Eastside Community Council, two hundred and fifty dollars for the Maywood Community Baseball League. I so move.
Second.
It's been motioned by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilwoman Poland, that we amend in claims nineteen ninety-two for four hundred dollars for the Hammond Hurricanes, and nineteen ninety-three for the East Hammond Community Council for two hundred and fifty dollars. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Any discussion on the amendment? Any discussion on the amendment? Roll call vote on the amendment.
Markovich.
Yes.
Pasalic.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Poland.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes. Motion passes. Nine in favor. Now, claims as read? Claims as read.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Poland.
I would like to pull claims seventeen seventy-four, seventeen seventy-five, and seventeen seventy-six for CR publications from the Department of Human Relations in the amount of three eighty-nine fifty. Each of them was in the amount of three eighty-nine fifty. It was brought to my attention in caucus that there needed to be some further clarification and approval on these claims through the Human Relations Department.
That's claim seventeen seventy-four, seventeen seventy-five, and seventeen seventy-six.
Yes.
For three eighty-nine fifty for CR publications. Is there any discussion on the pulling of the claim? Clerk vote? Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Now, back to the original claim as read. Roll call vote on the claims.
Markovich.
Yes.
Pasalic.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Poland.
No.
Opinker.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes. Motion passes. Eight in favor and one no. Number five on the agenda is public hearings. There are nine. Number six is communications. Communications. Communications.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Poland.
I have a letter I would like to read from Raymond Fletcher.
Please proceed.
President Higgs, I want to thank you for taking a moment to acknowledge the accessibility issue with the gas station at the last council meeting. Sadly, this is not the only business in the city with this issue. There are numerous others. Since no one seems to care about equal access and since no one has addressed this urgent issue up to this moment, I will continue to provide you with information about business, roads, and walkways that need to be addressed. As I've mentioned ad nauseam, the current public transportation system is ineffective. Previously, I challenged our elected officials to travel throughout the city in a wheelchair. I am reissuing this challenge. I'll even provide the wheelchair. Whether it is traveling from Chicago and Calumet, Michigan and Columbia, or one hundred and seventy-third and Grand, I can certainly attest that many of the walkways have curbs, no curb cuts, chunks of sidewalk missing, either bridge on Columbia and Calumet, scattered with debris, much like both Columbia and Calumet, and oftentimes are blocked altogether. Inaccessible or non-existent walkways do not only affect wheelchair users, just think about the mom pushing the stroller, the kids riding their bikes or rollerblading, or the elderly resident taking an afternoon stroll. This will also improve safety. Take, for example, one hundred and seventy-sixth Street. For a number of years, I've been advocating for a walking bike trail along that way. Students walking to or from Gavitt are walking in the street. Cars fly up one hundred and seventy-sixth, potentially putting the health and safety of a child at risk. While it is true there is a commission on disabilities in the city, its primary function is the annual feel-good breakfast and ramps. So, rather than address barriers and obstacles in our city, it basically feeds the city workers and gives awards out for being disabled or hiring the disabled. This is akin to giving an award for hiring someone for being black or Latino. Rather than wasting taxpayer money feeding city employees and giving awards for being disabled, perhaps they could focus on the broken crosswalk button on one hundred and seventy-first at Indianapolis Boulevard, or address the lack of curb cuts on one hundred and seventy-third from Kennedy to the tracks. The sidewalk is also non-existent from the Armory to the PUC Crosswalk, Purdue University. There are numerous other access points, and I look forward to addressing this issue with you. People with disabilities don't want to be treated differently, nor do they desire special treatment. They just want the same equal opportunity and access the non-disabled have. I don't think that's too much to ask for. I'm sure if you were to try to get around for one week in a wheelchair, you could appreciate the challenges one faces daily and understands better these simple requests. Ray Fletcher, third.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher, for your correspondence. I have a correspondence from Thomas M. McDermott, Jr., and it's Mr. Anthony Higgs, President of Hammond County Council, fifty-nine twenty-five Calumet Avenue, Hammond, Indiana, four six three two oh. The Hammond Board of Public Works forwarded your letter to my attention for a response. The homes that are rallying on Chicago Avenue between Johnson and Holman Avenue are doing so, according to the city engineer, because of the decorative condition of the pavement, which sends the traffic, truck traffic vibrations directly into the residents. Chicago Avenue is owned and maintained and controlled by NDOT. Please have all affected residents contact Michael W. McPhillips, District Deputy Commissioner, La Porte District, Indiana Department of Transportation, three fifteen East Boyd Drive Boulevard, La Porte, Indiana, four six three five oh. And that's the Councilman Salinas district, so that would be the person to contact. Please join Mayor Thomas McDermott, Jr., the Hammond Redevelopment Commission, and the Hammond Parks and Recreation at Pulaski Park located at one thirty-seven and Sheffield Avenue on April twenty-ninth, two thousand and eleven, from two to three p.m., as we unveil the new Pulaski Park Recreation Center, Pulaski Park Improvements. Pulaski Park is in the first district of the city of Hammond. Any other correspondence? Any other correspondence? Got one from the Civil Rights Commission, Indiana Civil Rights Commission. The Indiana Civil Rights Commission is hosting a full-day conference telling, negotiating, challenging landscapes in housing, education, and employment Friday, April twenty-ninth, two thousand and eleven, at the Genesis Convention Center in Gary. We are proud to bring to your area in-depth presentation for some of the region's most recognized community, education, business, faith-based leaders, and a variety of topics important to you and your community. As though a comprehensive understanding of the rights and responsibility of all Hoosiers with respect to housing, employment, education is crucial, and this one-day workshop will allow you and your constituents, you serve, an opportunity to get informed. The event is completely free. Please share this information with your colleagues, contact the public, and I highly encourage you to attend, regards, Ava Y. Young Taylor, Public Outreach Events Manager, and has a scheduled event for anyone interested on the council that would like to go. Any other communication? Any other communication?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Salinas.
Yes, I'll do. The mayor and the park department is throwing a Cinco de Mayo Saturday from five-thirty to eleven at the Hammond Civic Center. The Cinco de Mayo celebration.
Thank you, Councilman Salinas. Also, I received a correspondence from the School City of Hammond in regards to our scholarship. Unfortunately, Bishop No was, didn't get the applications in a reasonable time, so what happened was, I guess they, the counselor for Bishop No, they changed or something of that nature, so they wasn't given an opportunity to get the information so they could turn it in to apply for the scholarships that we give every year. So, we extended the deadline. They contacted me, the president, and I told them, I gave them until four o'clock on Wednesday, April twenty-seventh, two thousand and eleven, and the form should be turned in along with an alphabetical list of those students submitting a scholarship for. Okay? Any other communications? Any other communication? Communications is now closed. Committee reports. Committee reports. Committee reports. Councilman Opinker.
Mr. President, I'd like to bring out ordinance eleven twelve, the third and final passage.
Any other committee report? Any other committee report? Any other committee report? Committee reports is now closed. Number eight is ordinances on third reading and final passage.
Ordinance eleven dash twelve, sponsored by Councilman Opinker, and ordinance creating a new section to chapter ninety-four of the Hammond Municipal Code as it pertains to non-residents using neighborhood cleanup dumpsters.
Mr. President.
Councilman Opinker.
Basically, what this ordinance consists of, for us councilmen, that have cleanups in our district, which I have one.
Councilman, we need a second to your motion.
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned by Councilman Opinker, second by Councilwoman Poland, that we pass on third and final reading, eleven dash twelve. Now, is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Opinker.
Basically, what this ordinance is, us councilmen have cleanups. I actually have one going on right now. It started today, it'll end May second, and anyone caught throwing stuff in a dumpster that is not a Hammond resident or is a contractor can be fined up to twenty-five hundred dollars.
The fine and penalties will be again, what, of Councilman Opinker?
Up to twenty-five hundred dollars.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion as it relates to ordinance eleven dash twelve? That's the dumpster ordinance. Discussion? Any other discussion? Roll call vote on eleven twelve.
Markovich.
Yes.
Pasalic.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
No.
Poland.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes. Motion passes. Eight in favor and one no.
President Higgs, that concludes the ordinances for final passage.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Now, we'll go to number nine on the agenda, and that's introduction of ordinances.
Item eight, ordinance eleven dash eighteen, sponsored by Councilwoman Pasalic, and ordinance to amend Hammond City Code, Chapter thirty-six point one six zero pertaining to the municipal cumulative capital fund.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Pasalic.
I move for first and second reading of eleven dash eighteen with the public hearing on May twenty-third and place it in the council as a whole.
Second.
It's been motioned by Councilwoman Pasalic, second by Councilman Calwinski, that we move eleven dash eighteen on first and second reading by title and refer to council as a whole with a public hearing scheduled for May twenty-third, two thousand and eleven. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
I was wondering if the sponsor can tell us what this is, because we already have an ordinance for a cumulative capital fund. I was just wondering what we're changing here.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Poland. I mean, Councilwoman Pasalic, I'm sorry.
When I discussed this with Controller Robert Lundey, he said it was just to clarify and be more specific in how the funds are placed in the cumulative capital fund.
I did get an opportunity to review that ordinance, and I think it has something to do with the sidewalks and construction, and it spells out a few items in there, Councilman Markovich, just for clarity.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Well, whatever it says, I know we've had a cumulative capital fund ever since I've been a councilman over twenty-four years, and looking up the state statue of thirty-six dash nine dash fifteen point five dash two, it says here, establishment of a cumulative capital development fund. The legislative body of a municipality may establish a cumulative capital fund under IC six dash one point one dash forty-one to provide money for any purpose for which property taxes may be imposed within the municipality. So, I'm a little bit leery about this when it says to provide money for any purpose for which property taxes may be imposed within the municipality. So, I'm a little leery about this when they're talking about imposing more property taxes. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Pasalic.
If you see the one line where it says, which states that such funds may be used for acquisition of land, for sidewalks, or maintenance, for acquisition of land for sanitary or storm sewers, or to construct or maintain sanitary or storm sewers, utility acquisition, acquisition of land for park and recreation, public safety equipment, retiring bonds, public transportation equipment, computer network upgrades and maintenance, technological training and body armor. I think what the gist of this is, is just to be more specific in how the funds are used. Thank you.
Well, we can certainly discuss it in, when we have our council as a whole meeting. So, any other discussion? Any other discussion as it relates to this ordinance? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nay? Motion passed.
Item B, ordinance eleven dash nineteen, sponsored by Councilwoman Pasalic, and ordinance to amend Title VII, Chapter seventy, of the Hammond Municipal Code as it pertains to traffic ordinance violations.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Pasalic.
I move for first and second reading of eleven dash nineteen and place the ordinance in council as a whole.
Second.
Two people at the same time. It's been motioned by Councilwoman Pasalic and second by Councilman Spitali that we pass on first and second reading by title eleven dash nineteen and refer to council as a whole. Is there any discussion on eleven dash nineteen? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nay? Motion passed.
Item C, ordinance eleven dash twenty, sponsored by Councilman Henosa, and ordinance to repeal and resend ordinance nine zero nine nine.
Mr. President.
Councilman Henosa.
Motion for first and second reading of eleven dash twenty. Second.
It's been motioned by Councilman Henosa and second by Councilman Salinas that we go by first and second reading by title and pass eleven dash twenty. Is there any discussion?
Chairman.
Councilman Calwinski.
We'd request a roll call vote on that, please. Second.
It's been motioned by Councilman Calwinski and second by Councilman Opinker that we get a roll call vote on ordinance eleven dash twenty.
Mr. Chairman.
Wait till I say discussion? Discussion. Councilman Markovich.
Mr. Chairman, we've had several individuals that are here tonight that spoke in the caucus room, and I would like to make a motion that we have suspension of the rules and let these individuals come before the council and to everybody else to let them know their concerns. They had some really valid concerns, and a lot of them had a lot of good ideas about this ordinance and the way things should have been brought out, so I would make a motion that we allow all of our citizens here to speak tonight on this, those that may wish to speak in that respect.
There's a motion on the floor.
Second.
It's been motioned by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Salinas, that we have public expression at this time as it relates to this particular ordinance. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Henosa.
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote on whether or not we should allow the public to speak in regards to eleven dash twenty. Roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Pasalic.
Yes.
Spitali.
No.
Calwinski.
No.
Salinas.
Yes.
Poland.
No.
Opinker.
No.
Henosa.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes. Motion passes. Five in favor and four no. Public expression, if you wishing to speak on this item and this item alone, please step forward, state your name and address, well, not necessarily your address, just your name, and speak only on this topic, please. Thank you. Good evening, President. Thanks, Cheeks. Good evening, President Higgs, members of the council. You know, as I said in the caucus room, people are struggling. People are struggling to pay their mortgage, their NIPSCO, their groceries. They're seeing everything rise, the price of gas, a gallon of milk, but they're not seeing their incomes rise. People have exhausted their unemployment. People have exhausted every option available to them. Outside of breaking the law and robbing a bank, this is the only way some people can supplement their income. I have talked to an old-timer, and he said that he repairs, he repairs lawn mowers. He's retired, eighty-five years old. He can't afford the medication and everything else he has going on, and he worked for fifty years. You know, there are many stories like this in our great city, and it's sad that, you know, we have real issues pending before us, and we have to impose on somebody's right, on their property. A lady out today during the protest, she had mentioned that she'd been a property owner for fifty years, and she can't understand why are you going to come into her yard and tell her what to do with her property? She pays those property taxes. And as I mentioned in the council meeting, I use an example. If I had a barbecue, I had a barbecue this week, are you going to come and tell me I've had a barbecue for the year? You know, I can't have another one? It's unfair to those that are trying to provide for their family, just to put basic things like food on their table, diapers, as I stated, milk for their babies. You know, people don't have any other opportunities, and this is the only thing that they know. So, I would wholeheartedly encourage you to resend this ordinance and allow the city the opportunity to live their lives. Government has reached far into our backyards. Now, they're going to go into our garage sales in our pockets? I urge you to resend this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Let the record reflect, we only have eight present on the floor presently. One council member is not here.
Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
I think what you're saying is that Councilwoman Pasalic has left the council chambers.
Yes, sir. You may speak at this time.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Calwinski.
As she walked out, she said she was going to the bathroom.
Thank you, sir.
I ain't wait.
No, you have the floor, sir.
My name is James Weber. I live on Ridge Street, ten thirty-eight Ridge Street. I do a yard sale eight times a year. I pay my medicine for it. Medicine's too expensive. I got an inhaler. It's a hundred and sixty-four dollars, and I use two of those a month. I don't know anybody can afford to pay all that money for an inhaler, and it's, I got sick because of the air pollution in Hammond. There's a lot, you know, because you got the steel mills. I don't blame Hammond, I'm just saying. If you remember twenty years ago, we had a flea market called Gentis. Hammond was flourishing. Hammond was bringing in money and everything. We got all these old buildings downstate. Why can't we open up a flea market down there and charge people fifteen dollars like we used to in Hammond? I mean, the buses were making money hand over fist. They weren't crying that they didn't have enough money, because they were running Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and they were making tons of money because there was no parking. Why can't we do that? Because the golf course is not going to bring us no money. We're just shooting ourselves in the foot, and we're hurting ourselves, Hammond, to where we have to sit there and charge people for yard sales and stuff. If we open up like a flea market or something, something to make money, you know, that where all the money goes into the Hammond Coppers or whatever the lady said, you know, you don't have to raise taxes or anything, and we don't have to be sitting there doing this. But when Gentis was going, there was fifteen businesses that were right around Gentis, I believe a Chinese restaurant, he was making tons of money. Hammond was making money. There was the Army-Navy surplus, he was making tons of money. There was an art place across the street, you know, and as soon as Gentis went down, Army-Navy fell, then all the other business, the Sears Building closed down. Why can't we use the old Sears Building and use that as a flea market and bring people into Hammond to spend money? And since the city probably owns the building anyway, we can, it's three floors. Gentis was what, fifteen floors? And they only used three floors, and they were making money out hand over fist. And that's where you can get your extra money at, and it's not shooting anybody in the foot.
Thank you.
That's it.
Point well taken, sir. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Sharon Ball, and the question that I have, because from my understanding, you can only have like one yard sale a year. The question that I have is, why would it be a concern for everybody else if you have more than one yard sale? I'm not understanding that. If I'm having it on my property, in my yard, why would it be a problem for somebody else if I have more than one yard sale? I'm not bothering anybody, and I'm not hurting anybody, and I'm a taxpayer, so I'm not understanding. And my second part is, I'm also not understanding why would the police get involved if I have more than one yard sale? I think there's more things for police to be worried about instead of worrying about somebody having a yard sale in their yard. There's a lot of crime out here, there's a lot of other things going on out here, so why would it be so much of a concern for them if I have more than one yard sale? I'm not understanding this here.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I would like for that to be addressed, because, you know, I'm just not understanding it. There's a lot of things, other things going on in Hammond instead of worrying about the neighbor having more than one yard sale. I'm not understanding that. And I think as a taxpayer, we should know why we can't have more than one yard sale. As a gentleman said before, there's a lot of people that depend on these yard sales through the summer to get them by, and they're gonna take that away, they're gonna take that away from them? Or they're gonna send the police to your house because you decide that, okay, I'm gonna have a yard sale this week, and I wanna have a yard sale next week, so the police is gonna come to my house and say, no, you can't have a yard sale because you already had one last week? I don't think that's fair at all, and I think they need to rethink that, because it's more important things than worrying about a yard sale and worrying about how many yard sales you have a year. I don't think there really should be a limit. If I'm in my yard attending to my business and having my yard sale, I think that should be okay. You know, I don't want a police to come up to my yard and tell me, well, you had a yard sale last week, so you can't have one this week, but you got crime and other things going on, but you're concerned about a yard sale. I'm not understanding this problem here. Thank you.
Well, I can assure you, well, it's public expression, go ahead. I'll address that at the end. Ma'am, next.
My name is Laverne Graham. I live at 6404 Ohio in Hessville. My concern is too of the garage sale. I would like at least three garage sales a year. That's the only little income that I have besides social security. I paid for the Hammond Times to put the ad in, and if I submit to have a garage sale and I don't, I'm rejected. I'm out of that garage sale money. Who's gonna pay that for me? Nobody. I'm sure the city's not gonna do it. Like she said, I think the police has better things to do than to come out and close a garage sale down. Now, what if I was to have a garage sale and I didn't get a permit from you? Would I be fined? Or what would I be? I don't think this is right when we pay taxes. I go by the books, I'm not a messy garage sale keeper, my yard is clean, I take my flyers down, there is nothing messy, cars does not line up in the middle of the road and take up space for a police to come and say, you cannot have that garage sale. That's not right for us. That's our privilege it should be. If we wanted to have a garage sale in our own property and not doing anything, that shouldn't be concerned of anybody else except ours. I don't think this is right. I don't think Hammond is treating their citizens right. They've got to learn. We pay taxes. We do everything right. If you call our police and something goes on, they don't come out. I've called them several times at my house after my husband died three years ago, when I had window peepers. You think they come at two o'clock in the morning? No. Then when I would call our police department and say, why wasn't the police there? You didn't call us. You didn't call us. Now, that's not right. I think this audience should come out with three sales a year, not just one sale, and I don't think the police should come and close us down. That's not right. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Carolyn Jackson. I'm sure most of us would agree that we don't want to have a neighbor that does a garage sale every day. However, I don't think that most people who do garage sales every day should be punishing those who want to do one two or three times a year. To restrict those individuals who would like to have several yard sales a year is cruel, is inconsiderate, and it's unfair. With so many people without jobs, with the cost of gas being in excess of four dollars a gallon, those things were not bills, extra expenses that most of us planned for. So maybe in the past, we would have loaded up our cars and taken those items to Salvation Army or Goodwill. However, with the cost of gas going up and our NIPSCO bill and everything else going up, you'd look at it in a different light. Those pants, those school uniforms that I was gonna donate, I think I'll hold on to them and have a garage sale and make me a couple of extra dollars. Maybe I can use that to pay for gas so that I can get back and forth to work, or so that I can do some of the other things that I need to do. Why, my next question is create more responsibilities on the police department. Why create more responsibilities on the Board of Works? Why are we giving them more responsibilities when they're gonna need more money? I certainly would not want to call the police because I have an emergency, and they can't come expeditiously because, guess what? They're checking on some garage sales. You know, create a new ordinance. First of all, do, I mean, let's just meet our people halfway. Get rid of this nonsense about one garage sale a year unless you go to public works and explain to them as to why you want to use your property for a garage sale. Get a ordinance, make it real simple. One that states that we are gonna have X amount of garage sales a year, those garage sales are gonna be held at such and such a time, then guess what? No permit is needed. No visit to the Board of Works, no extra policing, no complaints because this person was treated differently than someone else. They had one and a half garage sales, a yard sale, and only had one. We don't have to hear any of that. Neighbors who don't like the idea of looking out their window and seeing a bunch of items on their neighbor's lawn, they'll know in advance that this is a particular date that the yard sale is gonna be, and they can schedule their activities and such where they don't have to be around to see that. Then everyone is happy. We don't have any excess bills, to pay, no complaints, and we can move on about more important issues that our city needs to be taking care of right now. Thank you.
Next, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Letitia Suarez. I live in the first district, and for the life of me, I cannot understand why such an ordinance was passed to begin with. I honestly believe that if they did something like did it once a month or however they chose to do it, that that would be more of a structured, I don't believe we should have to take all of our belongings to one location if we wanted just to do one garage sale like somebody proposed. I know a lot of my neighbors that have garage sales. I live at 4124 Sheffield, but nobody's doing them every weekend, so I don't understand why this would have been brought up to begin with. I just wanted to go on record that I'm totally against it, and I think that there is something else that the public works have responsibilities doing. We don't need to have somebody else hired in that department just to handle this extra workload. Thank you very much.
Well, my name is Janie Gomez, and everybody else has already said what I was thinking. The only thing that I'm gonna address the council people is to tell you that I'm hoping that you reconsidered and remember that when people come over to our doors and ask us to vote, we don't treat people bad. So I'm hoping that the council people and the mayor understand that we need the garage sales. Maybe some people need it more than others, and also that they understand that some of the kids will be missing out of this if they stop the garage sales to one day a year. And also, I don't understand why this would come up, because when you go out to buy, maybe you wanna go to a store to get your son or your daughter a bike or your granddaughter, and you can't afford it, and you see a garage sale and you stop and you get it for five dollars, and you're happy and the kids are happy. So I hope that you reconsidered and help us out the way the Hammond people helped the council and also the mayor, because I read something that he sent in the mail this last week where it said that he's been a mayor for eight years, and when he first came in, he thought that he knew it all. But he was wrong, and now after being a mayor for eight years, he has realized that he didn't know it all, but he's a good mayor and he's been learning by being a mayor. So I hope the mayor understands and reconsider if he's, before he signs, really look at it and see who's losing on this. And it's the Hammond people that are gonna be losing, the people that elect the councilmen, the people that elect the mayor. So I'm hoping that you will reconsider for, at least for the people that really need it, because there's, I might need it. I was thinking today, maybe that some of the councilmen voted, or some of the councilwomen voted, to have this done. Maybe they're the kind of people, we don't have the kind of money. Some people don't have the checks that the councilmen get. Like as for myself, I get a social security check. I pay the taxes. I pay whatever needs to be fixed in the house. By the end of the week, I get my check on the third. By the fifth, I have no money. And there's a lot of people out there. That's why I'm hoping that you reconsider and help the Hammond people. Thank you.
Mr. President, Oscar Sanchez, 6535 Madison. Lived there for twenty-three years, and I'm in favor of the repeal. I'm actually surprised that we had four council people that wanted to limit debate. I mean, I think that's, you know, freedom of speech is a very basic right. But I'm also surprised that, I don't know if you, some of you have lost touch, and maybe you don't have to buy gas because maybe you have a city vehicle, but there are folks out there that are having to pay four dollars a gallon. I know you have to buy groceries. I know you have to pay the NIPSCO bill, and so please don't lose touch. There are people out there who need this to supplement their income. You've just, Hammond is just hiring ten police officers thanks to three council people, and now you're gonna have those ten police officers, what, policing yard sales? I mean, that's the most ridiculous thing I've heard. There are more things out there that are closer to the citizens. I mean, limiting vendors to fifteen days a year? You think that's good public policy? These are people that need to supplement their income. We have greater challenges in Hammond. Why don't we lower, talk about lowering taxes for the residents? Why don't we try to find a solution for the flood plains residents that live in the flood plains and who have not found any relief at all, not from this city council? These are the things that we need to do, and we need to begin to start listening to our citizens, and I hope that, and I'm confident that in the end, you will do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Norma Orrhood, and I live at 3004 Cream Place, and I've been there fifty-four years June 2nd. I didn't have curves at one time, and I put a lot of money into having stone there, and then the city put curves in. I do have a rummage sale once a year. It's in my garage and on my blacktop by my garage, and my house faces where my garage comes off onto California Avenue. I should not have to pay a permit because I cut the parkway that belongs to the city, and it costs me seventy-five bucks a month, and I live on one thousand three hundred dollars a month, and I keep money out of that to pay my taxes. And I think it's a dirty rotten shame that you're taking all my privileges away from me, so I can't meet my bills so that the damn mayor can have my house and repossess it. I'm sorry, but it's wrong. You're taking our privileges away. We might as well move into nursing homes. I'm eighty years old, and I live on this budget, and I pay my taxes every year, one lump sum, but I save it out of that money. And I think because I have the rummage sale once a year, and I put that money away so I have my tax money, that you shouldn't take that right away from me. That's my freedom.
Hi, Larry Rapchak at 2540 Birch in the first district. When I heard about this, I was in the meeting two weeks ago, this issue, I kind of thought it was a tempest in a teapot. Now, being here tonight and hearing these people speak, I would change my opinion. This, people's livelihood depends to some real degree on this activity, and those of you who chose, who voted to not allow these good citizens to come here, who take the time to come here and be part of the political process, those of four of you who said, no, you're not gonna speak? Wrong. Just wrong. The experts say that the big recession of 2008 was supposed to have bottomed out in June of 2009. That's, it'll be two years in June, and it hasn't happened. Our economy is not coming back. President, or Vice President Biden made a slip of the tongue last August and said, maybe this is the new normal economically for America. And then they took him into the back room and beat him with a rubber hose and said, Joe, you're not supposed to say those kind of things. But in fact, he did let it slip, and it looks like he may have been, that may have been accurate. People are really hurting. It's obvious, this is a representative sampling of people, of our citizens. You work for them, they pay you. I urge you to try to find, there's gotta be a way to achieve some equilibrium and craft this legislation, and advise it to some point based on what you've heard here. We all understand that, yes, there are a certain amount of people who want the neighborhoods to look right, and do want to give the impression and the decor and whatnot, but the real fact of it is, is that people are hurting, are really hurting, and they need this money. So please, I urge you to reconsider this and craft it in some way so that it's not so harsh, all right, and allow these people to make some money. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. George T. Janik. In theory, in principle, I should say, the ordinance sounds like a pretty good idea, but in practice, it falls way short of what it intended to do. It obviously needs a lot more research to be crafted effectively, and maybe it needs the required input from a lot of different sources, including the people who spoke tonight. Councilman Markovich was right, there's a lot of great ideas that were brought up over here this evening with regards to some of the potential solutions and maybe even an opportunity to develop a business or two. The point remains that at a time when property tax caps and the frozen levy are affecting government's revenue and its ability to operate on previously bloated budgets, and now they're going to have to live on what they earn, which is basically property taxes, not just Hammond, but all other municipalities and all other levels of government have been required to cut their spending. And in essence, what you've done here with this particular ordinance, and this is where it fails significantly, is the fact that you've created more bureaucracy. In other words, you're going to require somebody to keep track of permits, and if that's not bad enough, and that's the legislative side, you're gonna have to turn around and then require enforcement. You know, last year that they were looking for cuts in various departments, especially public safety, the police department offered eight, a reduction of eight officers over a number of years through attrition. This year, we've hired eleven. That goes straight back to the cost of government and the property tax rate and what's going to come out of citizens' pocket. So we're actually, we're actually increasing the cost to residents, and this is where this legislation falls short. So it's time to take a look at maybe crafting better ideas and a better approach to what needs to be addressed here, because I'm sure some of the councilmen are looking at the exceptions, and there are a few people, and I've seen them throughout the city, that literally have a perpetual yard sale. It not just runs Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, every weekend of every month, but okay, but it runs also during the week. However, I do emphasize that that's an exception as opposed to the rule, and that's exactly what I think, and in my opinion, what this legislation was directed. But unfortunately, the good of the few is being observed as opposed for the good of the many, and maybe we need to sit back and do a better job of looking at crafting better legislation. Thank you.
Hi. I am kind of young to be thinking about this, but it really had me worried because some people depend on garage sales, and just to take this away from them, it's not good. Thank you.
George Stoya. Every once in a while, you know, you make bad law. I think this is one of them. I recall when it was initially proposed that there was some mention of the chambers of commerce, I don't know if it was Whiting-Robestale or the Hammond Chambers of Commerce, or maybe all three of them, or two of them, excuse me. It's draconian, period. It's bad law, period. I'm surprised you guys got, well, not surprised, I'm surprised you raised this, so, in an election year, you guys have voted it in. Gotsey. Gotsey.
Good evening, Carlotta Blake King. This particular, all of this conversation makes me proud to be an American, to live in the United States of America where you do have certain freedoms, freedom of speech, freedom of choice. And it's obvious at this time, we've heard freedom of speech, and we've heard the public. As leaders that you are, you have a decision to make, and it's gonna kick in, you know, in terms of what to do in a situation like this. We've heard great ideas regarding this disorderness, and for the most part, it sounds like we need to go back to the drawing board, perhaps start all over again, and come up with some better ideas. better ideas to make this happen, to make this work. And again, I'm proud to be an American, being able to speak, and I would hope that in the future, that the public will come forward on issues that are even graver than this, because our city needs our help, and we need the public to come up and speak up as they have done this evening. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak?
On this item?
I said on this item, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak? Public hearing is now closed. Can I get a motion to refer back to the regular order of business?
Mr. President?
Councilman.
We go back to regular order of business? Second.
A motion by councilman, second by councilman Opinko, that we go back to the regular order of business. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passed. Back to the regular order of business. That would be new and unfinished business. Well, under new and unfinished business, I guess I could say that I am extremely, are we?
Wait a minute, we're still under that ordinance.
Oh, we're still under the ordinance, okay. To repeal, okay. All right, is there any other discussion?
Mr. President?
Councilman and the host.
I'd like to nominate this ordinance as the dumbest law of 2011 already. We're just in the beginning stages of 2011, but it's gotta be the dumbest law I've ever heard. I've talked to, I've talked to people from other cities throughout Lake County here, and they cannot believe that we're passing something like this in the city Hammond. Like I said, this isn't Hollywood, California, this isn't Munster, this isn't Dyer, this is Hammond, Indiana. We have a lot of poor people out here, a lot of people that are just making it from paycheck to paycheck, that would just love to have two or three yard sales. If we remember when this was passed, so everybody knows here, this is already law. The police, the councilman can call, call the police department, I think, I think the police department has better things to do than shutting down the yard department, I mean, a yard sale. But what could happen here is the councilman can call up the police, call up the dispatcher and say, we have a yard sale. This happened, this councilman happens to call up or knows what was passed at the Board of Public Works, and if he finds out that you, that you're having a yard sale and you didn't go through the Board of Public Works, he's gonna call the police and take up the police's time. Meanwhile, we got somebody robbing a garage, we got somebody getting raped at a park, and we're gonna go shut down a yard department. I think it's a shame that we're doing something like this. Well, you know, one, one thing I am glad to hear, that we have freedom of speech here today, and I'm glad that Kathy Pasalic joined us in freedom of speech and letting everybody speak here, because a lot of people came here and took a lot of time, it's getting late out here, and I'm, I'm glad to see a lot of people out here speaking on this matter, and I'm glad to see Kathy Pasalic, that she understands, like myself, Al Salinas, Bob Markovich, and Councilman Higgs, that we have freedom of speech, and when we have this many people to talk on the subject, we need to let them speak, please. Like I said, here the police are going after gangs, they're going after burglars, they're going after drug dealers. No, we're gonna go shut down a yard sale. I don't think so. That's the wrong thing to do. I concur, and I believe that somebody that has a yard sale after, week after week after week, we had some good amendments in there the last time. I tried to put amendment, to try to have two yard sales per year, that was voted down by the same five people. Then I tried to put three in there. I knew two didn't pass, I knew three wasn't gonna pass, but I tried to get three in there. There's nothing wrong with having two or three yard sales per year. I think we should rescind and appeal this law. We need to turn this around. I, I hope we get the five votes tonight. What we'll have to do is, we're gonna have to wait under new and unfinished business and suspend the rules, and hopefully, we have a fifth person that's gonna vote to rescind and appeal this ordinance, but I think, like I said, I'm already gonna nominate it as the dumbest law we've ever passed in the city Hammond. You ought to be ashamed of yourself.
Please, no clapping, please, no clapping.
I second that too, on that.
Councilman and the host, can you take, Councilman and the host, can you please take the seat?
Mr. President?
Councilman Higgs.
Well, let me first start off by saying, I don't know what the older lady's name was from Hessfield, I mean, you really, really, extremely touched my heart in regards to saying how you only get $1,003 a month to live on, and that garage sales are your only way of income, and that you do the garage sales in your garage, and, you know, it's just unfortunate. And these very things that we're discussing right now were things that I brought up initially when this ordinance was brought before this body, and I was totally against it, and I'm still against it, and it just doesn't make sense. It's a no-brainer. The reality of it is, you know, people should be allowed to have as many yard sales on their property as they like, and it's the only means of income for a lot of people. And if you understand the reality of the times that we're living in, with gas for $19 a gallon, you know, food cost is going up, everything is extremely high, and we don't, ma'am, make a lot of money, but I can tell you one thing, as Councilman of the 3rd District of the City of Hammond, I contribute to all types of organizations, I do all kinds of programs throughout the city, and when someone comes in need of something, and particularly in my district, I step to the plate. But the reality of it is, you heard from a number of people from all races, from all backgrounds tonight, and they're speaking, and listen to what they're saying. They're saying it's not right, it's unfair, and you need to rethink of your decision that you made. We all make mistakes, but unfortunately, we have to sometimes correct those mistakes. And this is a mistake that was made that needs to be corrected. And the reality of it is, is that, not only on this issue, but you guys need to address more issues in the future. So that's all I have to say in regards to this particular ordinance, but it's very important that you listen to what the people are saying. That's it?
Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Markovich.
Like was stated earlier, everybody, when you, when you tend to speak towards the end, you just don't wanna be redundant and repeat. But the thing that bothers me is, oh, and I'd like to make an announcement, Haven House is gonna have a garage sale on May 7th, you know, they're asking. We, we all got a letter in our packet asking for different toiletries and so forth, and diapers for all the kids.
Sixth and 7th.
Sixth and 7th, okay, so that's Friday and Saturday, so that's two days, so now we gotta worry about if they're blowing the ordinance now because they're going two days instead of one. But anywhere they're in need, just like everybody else out there explained, you know, that they're about, you know, having a garage sale, and nobody's living off it, but it, it sure does help out. But just to give some background here, I've got a letter here from the town of Dyer, and this may have been written at the last council meeting. This is a letter as a response to your letter dated March 29th regarding requirements of garage sales. The town of Dyer does not have any ordinances or requirements regarding garage sales. Town of Dyer, pretty nice place to live and everything and all of that, but no ordinance for garage sales. I'm sorry, that was Dyer. And then we have Highland. I am in writing this letter in response to your inquiry regarding garage yard sales. Presently, the Highland Town Council has not adopted an ordinance regulating garage yard sales. Garage sales signs, however, are governed by our building department through our sign ordinance. Please find a copy of the Highland sign regulations. Whiting, the little city by the lake, they even closed an ordinance there, and I talked to several councilmen from Whiting, and they says, well, you know, it's on our website, and they sent a copy of their ordinance that's on the website. It says here, an outdoor sale may be held up to two times per calendar year, but no such sale shall be conducted for more than 14 consecutive days. I mean, that's two weeks, and, you know, somebody wants to do it for two weeks. Now, if somebody is gonna be moving and selling their house, or God forbid a divorce, maybe you would wanna have an estate sale or garage sale for two weeks, just so you can help settle the estate. And a lot of times, people die, and they wanna settle that estate, so they can, you know, move on, move forward. But the thing that, you know, kinda concerns me is, we had maybe 10 to 12 people speak here, not one person spoke in favor of the garage sale. Isn't that ironic? All these do-gooders that wanted these things, not one person got up there tonight and says they want an ordinance for garage sales. Nobody spoke about it. But yet, two weeks ago, you know, I did a little bit of research, we got a letter on our fax machine in our council office, and only one person got that fax, and that was Councilman Kowinski. He didn't share that information with the rest of the council. Do you know that we have the Whiting-Robertsdale Chamber of Commerce telling these councilmen in Hammond what to do? The Whiting Chamber of Commerce sent a letter proposing that we should have that ordinance. The little city by the lakes, tell Hammond what the hell to do. Ridiculous. But nobody shared, shared that letter with us, okay? Nobody. Only one person had it. Why wasn't that brought up during the meeting? What is there, where's the transparency? What's being kept a secret? But then there's other ulterior motives. Whiting has Garage Mahal once a year. They're saying, well, hell, why don't we get Robertsdale to have it, or Hammond, one time a year? Then they gotta go to Whiting and pay for the permit so you can be in their garage sale. Isn't that something? All boils down to money. Whiting wanted some of our money for that. You know? So it's crazy. It is absolutely crazy that the city of Whiting is gonna tell Hammond what to do, and they're gonna control four or five councilmen here. Ridiculous. Ridiculous. I mean, I'm sorry, but we don't get all the correspondence, and that letter was faxed the Monday morning of the council meeting, and not one of us got a copy of it.
Councilman Markovich, was it addressed to Councilman Kowinski?
I don't know, but you know what, Mr. Chairman? Any letter that comes on a fax machine in the city council office is public record, and we all should have been given a copy of that. And maybe, maybe our office staff need to be told that any time a fax comes in or goes out, or an email for any councilman or councilwoman comes in, goes out, that's public record. Any letter that our, our secretary's staff type, coming in, going out, that's public record. Maybe all of us on the council need to know. Now, I'm a councilman at large. I have six districts, so I'm responsible for all six. So I'm gonna be requesting that any time any correspondence comes in for any councilman in the district, requesting a copy of that, because you know what? I wanna know what's going on in my district. I have six districts, not just one. And I hate to hell to get a phone call and say, well, didn't you know about it? No, I didn't know about it, I wasn't told. So, case in point, why wasn't I given a copy of that letter from the Whiting Chamber of Commerce? Here, they're putting more restrictions on us, and they got a, a better ordinance for garage sales than we got. So go figure. What the hell's going on here? Thank you.
Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Kowinski?
You can certainly tell it's election time. Let me, let me clarify a few things. One, the ordinance is being misrepresented. First, the ordinance says that you can request one yard sale a year, and how you do that is you go to the Board of Works, or you fill out the form, and they grant the approval. And it's a two-day event, and you have your yard sale. It also says, it also says clearly in the ordinance, if, it's an event like a church doing, like a chamber doing, et cetera, only the event sponsor would need to get and issue a permit through the Board of Works for the 10, 20, 100 households, or whatever number want to do the sale. Another point in the ordinance is this, if you want a second yard sale, you request it through the Board of Works. If you want a third one, you request it. Now, why would we do that? A number of you before the meeting, and up here in public expression, said that you don't think it should be abused. You think there should be some order to that process. We agree. How you have order and structure is you monitor it. It's sort of like the policeman who's on the highway. Speed limit's 55. Fella or woman who's doing 56 miles an hour, not so likely to get a ticket.
Please refrain from talking in the audience while the councilman is speaking, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The person doing 65 or 70, both of them are extending the law, but in likelihood, the one doing 65 or 70 may get the ticket. Now, you all, some of you said monitoring is a good idea. This ordinance offers an opportunity to monitor the number. It doesn't quelt it at one. It just says, if you want a second, or you want a third, request it, and they'll, through their discretion, decide whether it warrants that. It's a way to tell if that person on the next block is doing five days a week for seven weeks, and we don't want that to continue. This really is meant to stop what a lot of you are talking about, and that's the abuser. So I had this ordinance read once by the clerk, I suppose we, maybe we should have it read one more time. It allows, for your first, for your first yard sale, you would still request the permit through Board of Works. If you wanted a second one, you would still request it through the Board of Works. If you wanted a third one, you would still request it. But I'm guessing that when your speed limit's more like 70, and you're at seven or eight already, you might have a hard time getting it approved. And I, from what I understood, I was hearing some of you saying you'd like this to be monitored, but you want more frequency than one. The ordinance actually allows opportunity for more than one. There's been a misrepresentation here, and it's election time, and there is structure in this, and it's intended to have structure to protect the rights of people who live in a residential area, but some people, it's the exception, but some people are trying to run a commercial operation in a residential neighborhood. Most of us don't wanna see that because of what it brings and how it impacts the neighborhood. It's not most of you in the crowd, most of you in the crowd will continue to get what you want, but for that one that's going 70 miles an hour, they're not likely to be continuing to get those permits, and they would be cited. So there's flexibility, and this is well thought out, and it's the kind of ordinance that protects you and your neighborhood, and it continues to offer you the rights or the chances to have your yard sales if it's one, if it's two, or if it's three. Thank you. Oh, one other thing regarding the Whiting-Robertsdale Chamber, that did not come across on a fax. That was given to me by the Whiting-Robertsdale Chamber, and it's here. And the reason it didn't come out during the meeting is, honestly, it was passing through, I had the votes, and I didn't even think to bring it out. It wasn't the Whiting Chamber trying to implement an ordinance in Hammond to make money off the Garage Mahal, it was me interacting with the Robertsdale-Whiting Chamber to see what they thought of it, and to get their impressions. And their impression was that they didn't see that this was a bad ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Mr. President?
Councilman Spitali.
Councilman Kowinski. There was an item that was brought up in the caucus. If they already have their permit for a particular day, and a rainout happens, what happens then?
First, if they ask for a permit, it's usually going to be a two-day event. You get two days on the permit. So if it's Friday and Saturday, the dates would be on the permit. If it's a rainout, you would request another date.
So?
It wouldn't be held against you. It, I mean, you would say it rained the weekend, I couldn't do it, and they, you'd ask for another one.
You'd have to go.
No, I don't think the people that work for the Board of Works are going to like be difficult about this, they just wanna help monitor and keep residential areas safe and residential.
Mr. President?
Councilman Spitali.
Councilman Kowinski. Again, you said that there would be two days, is that correct?
That's right in the ordinance, yes, sir.
So?
Section A. No garage or yard sale shall be allowed from the same parcel of residential property located in the 70...
in the city of Hammond more than one time a year. The owner of the property may petition the Board of Works for a permit to conduct the garage sale, which will be good for two consecutive days. The Board of Works may, in its discretion, grant permits for additional sales or approve events which include a garage sale. That doesn't sound all that rigid and strict to me. That sounds like an attempt to be fair to people and to monitor, to respond to people who are experiencing the inconvenience of ongoing garage sales in their neighborhoods, and it is a distraction.
So it is two days.
Yes.
Right in section A.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
Yeah, one thing I wanted to point out, too, is to get a permit, you don't have to actually come to the meeting. It says in the ordinance that you just, you can just send a letter or correspondence. So you don't have to make a trip to the Board of Works meeting, you can just send a letter requesting a permit.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
How often do they meet, the Board of Works? I don't know.
Every Thursday, they meet at nine a.m. here in the council chambers.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I think the reality of it is, is that people don't wanna be mandated as to when and where they have a yard sale. That is the question. It's not whether or not you say one or two days if you apply for a permit. Why should I have to? And I own my property, I pay taxes, of course. Even after I pay taxes, I still never own it, but while I'm there, it's my property. Now, why should I have to go to the Board of Works to say, oh, can I have a yard sale? It doesn't make sense. The reality of it is, people are struggling. People don't need to go through the extra channels for something so frivolous as such as a yard sale. Let's be realistic about this. Come on now, we can come up with much better things to discuss, like crime prevention. Let's get more patrols on the streets and try to deter crime versus worrying about Christmas lights and things of this nature. It's ridiculous. And the reality of it is, people have no other means of income. Do you hear what they're saying? They don't need to be sanctioned on whether or not I can have a yard sale. This is their only means of income. That's what I'm hearing. And if you're not hearing that, I'm sorry, because that's exactly what I'm hearing from
Is there any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinojosa.
You know what? This reminds me of when we closed down, or I didn't, but the department, the Health Department was closed. There was no plan. There was no plan with the Health Department, and everything just, well, we'll see what happens. And I think that's what we have here, that's why we're discussing it so much, is because there is no plan. There is no plan as to who's gonna monitor this, what, the Board of Public Works is gonna do all this work, or, I haven't heard that the inspections Department is gonna monitor this, and they're, they're, they're closed on Saturday and Sunday. So it boils down to the police. They're gonna be called and say, hey, Mrs. Jones is having a yard sale on New York Avenue. They don't have a permit, they didn't go through the Board of Public Works, can you please shut them down? Meanwhile, she's trying, she's struggling, she's trying to have a two-day yard sale, she's trying to put gas in her car. Myself, in my expedition, I wound up putting a hundred and thirty-five dollars to fill it up from top to bottom. A hundred and thirty-five dollars. I hope we don't have to come over here to the Board of Public Works in person to get this letter. I'm hoping that you can send this letter through the Board of Public Works, but I'm hoping what happens here today is that we get one more person, a fifth person, because what we have to do today after this discussion is we need five people that are gonna say, we're gonna put this in committee. After we do that, we're gonna go down to our agenda, and under new and unfinished business, I'm gonna ask to suspend the rules. We're gonna need nine votes to suspend the rules so we can pass this tonight. Do you think we're gonna get nine votes? Be lucky if we get five. I hope we at least get five. I hope somebody changed their mind, 'cause like I said, this is the dumbest law I ever heard in my life. It's, I'm ashamed of being a councilman in the city Hammond, and we have a law like this in the city Hammond. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Higgs.
And, and I just, you know, I heard a statement earlier that it's election year. Well, let me tell you something, it doesn't take election year. If you do your job throughout the year, you don't have to worry about election year.
That's right.
So the reality of it is, you should be working for your constituents year-round and not just at election time.
I second that.
Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
I gotta, I gotta be careful what I say, because I'll probably get a muzzle put on me. I can't talk that much, you know, they won't let me. Barely got to speak here, we had four people voting no, they didn't even want you to talk out there. Well, somebody made the comment, must be election time. You know what? I can concur with Councilman Higgs. You gotta be representing your constituents three-hundred-sixty-five days, twenty-four-seven, you know? Not during election time. This ain't just 'cause of election time. I can concur with Councilman Higgs also, this has gotta be the dumbest ordinance ever brought up, along with a hot dog cart, or putting Christmas tree lights out, that you have to take down Christmas tree lights by March first every year. So, you know, we need to call the cops and tell everybody, take their Christmas tree lights down, because there's a lot of them still hanging out there, that, you know, somebody sponsored an ordinance for that, you know? But yet people are getting shot and killed and everything else and all of that, but we want our cops to go there and tell the people, hey, you got your Christmas tree lights ordinance up there, you better start taking them down, because we're gonna fine you up to twenty-five-hundred dollars. But you know what? People say it's election time. Like I said earlier, there was probably twelve people here that spoke that they don't want that garage sale. Well, I know who in the hell them twelve people are voting for, and hopefully a lot more people that are watching it on the website, but those that, you know, don't have the, you know, the internet, seeing how we have this, basically the same councilman doesn't wanna spend the money to put us on TV, where our senior, our young senior citizens can just turn on the TV, grab that little glass of wine or that favorite beverage, and watch the council meetings. I can recall, you know, doing this, I've been a councilman for twenty-four years, and people come out and attack you, you know, on your record. Well, my record speaks for itself. And I can recall that they would go ahead and comment, says, how bad the city council was, because, you know, people, councilmen don't know how to talk, how to represent themselves. So you gotta put that in the back of your mind, that maybe that's why they don't want it on TV. Transparency. People don't want anybody, you know, to know what's going on at a council meeting. Those of you that came out here because you are against that ordinance, and you know it's gonna hurt everybody, and the stories that they came up about medicine, putting the gas in your car, buying diapers, buying medicine, buying food and so forth, those are valid things. We're not here as, you know, to represent the rich people and so forth and all of that. But, you know, the thing about it is, you know, we talked about traffic tickets and speeders during the garage ordinance. You know, what does that have to do with a garage ordinance, talking about like a traffic ticket or anything in that respect? There's no sense to it. And you know what? Maybe, you know, it's election time, yeah, but maybe those twelve votes that are here today, plus how many more out there are seeing what's going on, or maybe the newspaper will do their job and go ahead and list the four council persons that voted not to let you speak. You took the time out here tonight, you know, to come here and speak and voice your opinion. But you know what? If this is such an easy deal, I mean, you had somebody that didn't even know when the Board of Works were meeting. You know? Didn't even know that. But if it's so easy to get a permit, then maybe we should change the ordinance that the district councilman has to go to the Board of Works and get that permit for you. You know, if it's so easy, have the district councilman, you call them up and say, I need a permit, I want you to go to Board of Works and get a permit for me. You know, there's nothing wrong with that. At least they'll take the pressure off the cops and so forth, because now, whenever time you want a permit for a garage sale, have your district councilman go ahead and get it for you. That way, you know, we make no mistake, and in that way, you won't get the cops called on you, you won't get fined twenty-five hundred dollars. But you know what? This is election time. So you know what? That's a bad thing to say now, it's election time. But you know what? You have to represent the people. I voted on ordinances in the past, some were good, some were bad, but you have to represent the people. Because you know what? You're the core here in this city, you're the one that keeps this city going. There's a few that are leaving, but, you know, we can't all answer that. So, again, thank you for coming tonight.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. President.
Councilman Kowinski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe one of the council mentioned a little earlier that the inspections Department was not going to be doing these oversights of the permits. In fact, in section D, it says that it may be enforced by the inspections Department and/or the Police Department. Now, inspections is operating Monday through Friday, approximately eight to four-thirty, five days a week. And your code officer is most of the time out in the field looking at properties and situations that they're called about to look at by their residents or constituents from those districts. On weekends during the daytime, when most yard sales go, if a police officer took a minute and wanted to stop and see a permit to know whether this was being conducted on the days that was scheduled to, or whether this was the sixteenth one versus the first one, I believe police answer their police calls in the order of priority and do address, you know, situations that are urgent, in an urgent way. So is this on the bottom of the totem pole? Probably. And yet on Saturdays and Sundays during the days, there might be opportunity for them to stop for a minute and check these things out to keep the integrity of the neighborhood intact. So thank you. Chico, can you get?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Higgs.
Point of order. I believe the president has had two opportunities.
Come on.
This debatable motion to speak.
Come on.
I think we're done.
I'll call on the attorney to answer that.
As I said the other time, Robert rules already say that you're supposed to only speak twice on the same issue.
Okay, I guess your lips have been sealed. Mr. Chairman. Councilman, uh, Councilman Markovich.
Point of order.
Your point of order is?
Yeah. Councilman Jeff Markovich has spoken more than twice on this debatable issue.
I would, I would have to say that he's right, and there's gonna be no freedom of speech. Uh, point of order. Point of order. Mr. Chairman, as chairman, you can recognize anybody you want to go ahead and speak during discussion when valid information is to be provided to the, to the audience here.
Mr. Berger, please restate Robert's rules for us.
Attorney Berger.
I mean, it's the same as what I said.
Can we please follow the rule? Get the order. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
I believe that most of us are here on the same page as what we have here. Listen to everybody speak this evening with rain delays and things of this nature. I'd like to make an amendment to have it for two days that you don't have to ask for anything.
Mr. Chairman, point of order.
What's your point of order, Councilman?
I would like the clerk to go ahead and count how many times Mr. Spitali has spoken
It's discussion.
We would have to play the, Clerk Golick said we would have to play the tape back and find that information.
I think, though, if he's, if he's making an amendment, it's not debate, it's making a motion.
He's amending the language in the ordinance. And what was your amendment?
My amendment, Mr. President?
Mr. President, a point of order. I believe this is, this is not even in committee yet. How can we put amendment if it's not even in committee for passage yet? If the clerk can verify?
Point of order, well taken, Councilman Hinojosa. Let's refer back to the original content of the ordinance. Any other discussion as it relates to eleven dash twenty?
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinojosa.
If we have the clerk, let us know where we stand at right now.
Clerk Golick, they would like to know where do you stand in all else fails.
The ordinance is eleven dash twenty, sponsored by Councilman Henosa. A motion was made by Councilman Henosa, seconded by Councilman Salinas, for first and second
And that would be to put that, excuse me, one second, Councilman, that would be to put that in committee. First and second reading by title, and we were voting on that, right?
The clerk did not hear the committee that it was assigned to.
No committee.
There was no committee, Mr. Chairman.
No committee? Just first and second reading by title. Okay. Councilman, uh, Kowinski. And I believe I followed that with a roll call vote. Roll call vote for eleven twenty, the content of the ordinance, there was no amendment put in, we are, everybody understand where we at? We're voting to first, put this in first and second reading by title.
Pardon me?
Is there any discussion? Was there, there was a motion in second in court, Clerk Golick?
That is correct.
All right. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinojosa.
I just wanna let the council know and the audience know that if there's not five votes to put this in committee, it's election time. See you after election. Thank you.
Mr. President, we're voting on what right now, please?
We are voting on eleven dash twenty as to whether or not we're gonna put that in, um...
Committee, right?
To accept it on second reading.
Second, to accept it as second reading, not committee, because it was never put in. Okay? Are you clear on that? All right. A roll call vote on eleven dash twenty.
Markovich. Pasalic.
No.
Spitali.
No.
Kowinski.
No.
Salinas.
Yes.
Polan.
No.
Opinkar.
No.
Henosa.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes, motion fails, five no's and four yeses.
President Higgs, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Next on the item of the agenda is resolution, there are none tonight. Number eleven on the agenda is new and unfinished business. New and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinojosa.
I'd like to send a letter to the Board of Public Works to have a no parking in the alley Parkway between Kenwood Street and Parkway North.
Been motion by Councilman Hinojosa, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Pollard that we send a letter in regards to no parking. Is there any discussion, any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinojosa.
Uh, this letter is due to four, four-wheelers tearing up the grass in that area. This is one of those alleys, that's one of those white alleys. Can you put on there the thirty-one-hundred block? It's under thirty-one-hundred block, and there's a lot of four-wheelers and, and trucks just tearing up the grass back there, and we have other alleys that are the same way with no, no parking.
Okay, thirty-one-hundred block will be added in as well. The clerk has that. Anyone, I know you all had spoke on the public expression on one item, but if you're interested in speaking again to the council, you may do so by signing in at this time, okay? But we need to, are we gonna go down this list? Are you guys okay with the list, or do you wanna start a new list? Because it may be a certain, another topic you wanna discuss.
Another topic.
Another topic. We're gonna start a new list, okay? That way you guys will have it. New and unfinished business.
Mr. Chairman. I have a motion on the second.
It's been motioned a second for the letter, yeah. Any other discussion on the letter being sent? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. New and unfinished business, new and unfinished business.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Salinas.
Yes, I would like to send a, a letter to Jim Callahan, Board of Public Works, on a property that was demoed and caused damage to a roof at eleven-eleven Michigan. I would like some answers, pictures on the property that was demoed.
It's been motioned by Councilman Salinas. We still got a Council, Councilman Spitali, Councilman Markovich, and Councilman Hinojosa. We still need to conduct this, please come on y'all, I need y'all. It's been motioned by Councilman Salinas, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Pollard that we send a letter on... Second by Councilwoman Pollard that we send a letter on eleven-eleven Michigan taking pictures of the roof that's been damaged. Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Salinas.
Yes, I would like another letter sent to the Public Board of Works.
Is that the same letter?
No, another one.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays, motion passed. Now, Councilman Salinas.
Yes, I would like another letter sent to the Public Board of Works, Jim Callahan, and the city attorney. Uh, I had a garage that needs to be demoed. We're going on four months, five months, that the residents are tired of seeing this garage, um, still up. They demoed the house seven, eight years ago, they never took the garage down. People are hanging around there, partying. They need to get this garage down at forty-three oh three Hickory.
Forty-three oh three Hickory, is there a second?
Second.
It's been motioned by Councilman Salinas, seconded by Councilwoman Pollard, that we send a letter to the Board of Works, the Law Department, Code Enforcement, for forty-three oh three Hickory, uh, to have that demoed immediately. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. New and unfinished business, new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Opinkar.
I'd like to let every know, let everybody here know that, uh, in anybody in the fifth district, we started a cleanup today. Uh, it's gonna be running through, um, May second, Monday, and anything you have to throw in them dumpsters, feel free to clean out your yards, whatever you have to do.
Thank you, Councilman Opinkar, for that point of information regarding cleanup. New and unfinished business, new and unfinished business?
I don't need that, Mr. Berger.
I would just like a letter sent to the Board of Works and Code Enforcement for two forty-eight Williams to have that demoed, and also for nine oh four Moore Street. Uh, the property needs to be demoed as well, and see what the status is, and I need a report sent back to my office as quickly as possible in regards to those properties. I so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Been motioned by the President, Councilman Higgs, and seconded by Councilwoman Pollard that we send a letter to the Board of Works, Code Enforcement, Inspection Department about the demos of two properties, two forty-eight Williams, as well as nine oh four Moores. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passed. New and unfinished business, new and unfinished business. Is there any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinosa.
Uh, I'd like a letter sent to the, um, Chief Ryan Miller and Mayor McDermott, uh, on a proposed, uh, indoor gun range that's been proposed in, uh, in the sixth district. Uh, the councilman would like to see the plans on this.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been motioned by Councilman Hinosa, seconded by Councilwoman Pollard, that we send a letter to Chief Ryan Miller and the Mayor McDermott in regards to the gun range that's proposed for the fifth, uh, sixth district, is it fifth or sixth?
Sixth.
Sixth district, and he would like to see the plan, is there a plan for that gun range? Any, uh, discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinosa.
Uh, this past Friday on, uh, WJOB, uh, it was mentioned by Mayor McDermott that, um, the, uh, City Hammond, uh, in the sixth district, we have a gun range, uh, that, um, has been there for twenty years since, uh, Mayor McDermott Senior, and, uh, Mayor McDermott said that we're gonna get a new, uh, indoor gun range, uh, and I'd like to see those plans, uh, and verify this.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? I had thought that maybe, uh, Chief Miller would have been here tonight and gave us a plan, but unfortunately, maybe something came up, so maybe he'll be at the next meeting. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passed. New and unfinished business, new and unfinished business, new and unfinished business. There's a sinkhole in my district on Soul Avenue, and that's the fifty-six-hundred block of Soul, and I sent a letter last year, and I'm sending, uh, requesting to send another letter and, uh, about a sinkhole in the fifty-six-hundred block of Soul Avenue to see if they can get that repaired. I don't know if a sewer's sinking in or whatnot. I so move.
Second.
It's been motioned by Councilman Higgs, seconded by Councilman Salinas, that we send a letter to, uh, Code Enforcement, Board of Works, and Engineering to see if we can get the sinkhole fixed, as well as I want to add on Eaton Street too, that they were supposed to be doing some, uh, photographs underneath this, the, um, construction to see if whether or not that foundation is, uh, falling in as well. I so move. So, uh, it's been motioned by me and seconded by Councilman Salinas, any, uh, discussion on the letter? Any discussion on the letter? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. New and unfinished business, new and unfinished business. I did get an opportunity, I will say this for the public record, to send a letter in regards to Indiana Black Expo this morning, and I did speak briefly on WJOB twelve-thirty a.m. in regards to me, uh, trying to obtain and getting Indiana Black Expo established and brought back to our city. The resources that they, it provides for the African-American community and the city at large is overwhelming, and they do a wonderful job throughout the state, and I would like to see that chapter restarted here in my city. So I just wanted that for a point of, uh, information. Any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is now closed. Pl- first speaker of the night is Perry Sh- Perry Shambor?
Stabler.
Can't even see that.
Hi, my name is Perry Stabler. I live at twenty-nine thirty-six Gibson Place, and my concern is the gun range. Gun range hasn't been a good neighbor. It is very loud, they shoot all hours of the night. I had left, um, Mayor McDermott's secretary my cellphone number and my home phone number so that he could get back to me, so I can discuss the gun range with him. He did not call me back, so I called WJOB on his morning show, and I had discussed that, uh, is the gun range gonna be an indoor or an outdoor gun range? He told me it was an indoor gun range. I had said, "Well, as you go through my neighborhood, tell the people it's an indoor gun range." Well, I found out later, it isn't an indoor gun range, it's an outdoor gun range. I think I've got some ideas here, if the council would listen. Uh, first of all, the building that they talk about that has mold, I would like to have an inspection on it and see how much mold there is, and if we can save that building, to save a little money. Chief Brian Miller called me up today, and he had explained to me that it is an outdoor gun range, and I said, "Chief, with all due respect, how are we gonna cut the noise down?" And he said, "We will plant evergreen trees and pine trees." Well, being the old swamp rat I am, I looked out there, and on this mound that covers the gun range for the noise, there is probably two hundred cottonwood trees. So I'm figuring, cut down the cottonwood trees, two hundred, but it probably at least costs a hundred thousand dollars, and to plant pine trees on this mold would probably cost a hundred thousand. And the soil, I don't think is conducive to pine trees. Every pine tree I ever seen up north fishing, hunting, or riding a dirt bike has sand on it, so that won't go. So I'm figuring if you cut two hundred thousand dollars to cut the trees down, a hundred thousand dollars to cut the pine trees, that's three hundred thousand, and three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to put up this building, that's six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. It's a lot of garage sales. And what I, what I would like to see is not to waste our money in our district and to put a six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar indoor gun range. And to pay for that, maybe we can have the neighboring communities like Wister and that use our gun range. So Chief Brian Miller explained to me that he would make sure they would only shoot certain times, this and that, and I believe him, but when the regime of Mayor McDermott and Chief Brian Miller is gone, and if I said yes, and a new regime comes in, and everybody, everybody retires or something, people are gonna be shooting like mad, and I can't agree to that. And I asked Chico, Council, Chico Hinosa, to not to give any money right now, till we sit down and think of a real good facility. And another thing too is, with all this noise, it's cost a lot of people the devaluation of our house. And if, if you put a indoor gun range, I think it would help the neighborhood, the cost of the homes, and, uh, I wouldn't have to spend the rest of my life listening to the noise.
All I gotta say. Thank you so much, sir. Uh, three minutes, three minutes, please. Uh, George Stoia.
I'm Councilman, although I am next on the list, I think you overlooked somebody prior to him.
Oh, I can't, okay, that's the first person.
James Weber.
I can't understand that, James. Okay, I'm sorry, I apologize. It's okay, come on up. It's your time.
Are you still using the first list also?
No, we went to the second one, ma'am. Would you like to sign?
Yes, sir, please.
You made me step on up.
My name is James Weber, I live off of one hundred and sixty-fifth. We got these people coming from Illinois, and they're pulling their cars on one hundred and sixty-fifth by the Dollar General, and they're selling the cars. They don't have plates, some of them have paper plates, but you see the for sale sign. I had a friend purchase a car from one of them, it was a trip. She ended up, couldn't get the license because they didn't have a dealer's license in the state of Indiana. Then they turn around, you have to go to Illinois, pay the Illinois taxes and everything, registered Illinois as someone else's address that you don't even know. Then once they get the license, you gotta come back to Indiana, because you already gave them the money, and they won't give you the money back, 'cause you can't get the title. I'm feeling that there should not, if, there's something's gotta be done about this, because they're ripping people off, they're ripping Hammond off, and they're coming from Chic, downtown Chicago, Illinois, and parking their cars there. And something's gotta be done. It's, it's, you know, you know, if, if we're gonna do this for the yard sale, we might as well do it for these cars, because the cars are actually hurting people. You know, it's just getting bad.
What's that? Sorry.
It's on one hundred and sixty-fifth, next to the new Dollar General and, um, what was that? Dollar, Dollar something, Dollar Tree, whatever, they're, they're just sticking them all along.
The old, the old, old Army Navy.
The old Army Navy, and then, but they're going all the way down the street, and then you see the cars, it's for sale. If you call the number, it's Illinois.
Well, well taken, thank you so much, sir.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Chuck.
Yeah, I'm moving. George Stoia, Robertsdale. I, I'm a bit stunned at, uh, I'm the guy that brought up the thing about being election year, that you guys are gonna sit here and suddenly walk the high, the high road on this as if you weren't political. I mean, I mean, if you want to, that's fine, there's such a thing called political theater, uh, but, you know, this is hardly the time on this issue. Either here nor there, I agree with you, you should be thinking about serving your, uh, constituents. But I'm stunned at the language, uh, used, utilized by Councilman Kowinski in justifying, um, this, I guess this invocation of discretion, that suddenly you don't have it by right, you have it by the, the discretion of the Board of Works. I just find that stunning, and he calls it structured. I find it more, to be more, uh, dominating mechanism, and not so much structuring, uh, and to monitor, uh, uh, I, the choice of language I thought was poor, and I don't think, I don't, maybe it did convey what he meant. Uh, I hope not, uh, I mean, uh, it, that's not structure. We're, we're being dominated with respect to the rights that accrue normally to fee simple absolute, or if you're renting, you have the equivalent thereof, the rights of your possession and the disposition of your property. I mean, we're talking something that's borderline sacred in our society. Uh, to suddenly regulate it, and suddenly you can, you can submit a letter to the Board of Works and maybe, in their discretion, which incidentally is a much higher standard, that's a standard of equity, to, to, to say that somebody, you've got to prove they abused their discretion if they say no. And, well, uh, you know, that's, that's a hard nut, it's a very hard nut. It, it's unlike just having a, a strict rule to go by, and did they comply with the rule? Did they conform with the criteria? Oh, no. Discretion is, eh, very ambiguous, and you've got to invoke a whole lot of persuasion in addition to proof. So how do you justify or persuade somebody that, gee, I'd like to have a third garage sale? Well, that's what's gonna happen, you're gonna have to submit it to the Board of Works. That's preposterous. That's oppressive. That's not structured. It's oppressive. And, and you guys ought to be shamed of yourselves that voted for, this is bad law. You have to get off and, and maybe humble your ego, or however you wanna phrase it, and just say, you know, I, you know, I'm not one to, uh, go on my way to oppose the powers that be, be it McDermott or be it you guys up here, but this is just flat-out bad law. I mean, to, to say that you get, you don't even get your first one by right, your first one has to pass muster with the Board of Works. That is just, I, I don't know, I don't know how you can do that, Mark, to be honest with you. You're an educated man, I don't, I don't know where you thought this up. Hopefully, it's not your language, maybe you adopted it from somebody, I don't know, it's just, I, I, I can't even reconcile that it came out of you. I'm not trying to get on you, I'm just like, is this the Mark Kowinski that I know? I don't think so. Uh, um, I mean, pretty soon, I, I get the, the impression that it'll, we'll have to start saying, we'll have to ask, uh, for leave, may I have leave, sir, to have a garage sale, like, like something on some pompous British film, you know? Uh, that ain't right, that's not what we're about. That's just not what we're about. So, I, uh, it's an election year, I hope there's some consequences to your votes.
Wow. Chuck. Chuck.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Uh, I thank you for staying late and, uh, allowing us some opportunity for free speech that's very important in our society. Um, as you know, and I don't mean to give you a civic lesson, there's three, three branches of government, judicial executive and legislative, and they're watchdogs to each other. Uh, I've been in this community since nineteen ninety-one.
Excuse me, Chuck, I don't mean to cut you off, but for the record, they need your name.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Chuck Rocek, R-O-C-E-K, and I live on Mason Street in Hammond.
Thank you so much.
Uh, I've been in this community since nineteen ninety-one, a bit of a community activist. Uh, as a landlord, I pay higher taxes than you, than those who aren't. As a landlord, I pay for Code Enforcement. Single-family residents do not. My wife and I have donated equipment to the Hammond Police Department, surveillance equipment, um, a pair of biotic mics, undercover equipment, my wife and I have contributed to, um, we've bought a, uh, an officer a dog cage. And I find it ironic that a citizen would have to buy that type of equipment for the Hammond City Police Department. Let me go on. Um, free speech is exceptionally important, and part of that is choice of, of running for office and supporting political candidates. In two thousand and four, in front of this very city council, I hand, I mailed to Councilman Higgs, newly elected back then, as well as Mayor Tom McDermott, a piece of material regarding conditions in the Harrison Park area. Ironically, four days later, I get a visit from Code Enforcement knocking on my door, and it wasn't a friendly visit. In two thousand and seven, I ran for city council in, uh, against Councilman Higgs, and he taught me a wonderful lesson, humility.
I taught you what?
Humility, humility. I lost admirably to you. Uh, that's my, uh, bit of fame. The moral to the story at hand is, ironically, I got another visit from Code Enforcement, citing my property, going after me again, saying that I had out-of-state plates, what a wonderful experience it was. Two thousand and eleven, and I'll share with you, there's been correspondence between a council person sitting in this room, I'm not gonna mention that person's name, that I won't find an attorney for this action. In two thousand and eleven, early part of two thousand and eleven, I requested Mayor Tom McDermott's financial campaign reports. Four days later, I get a citation from Code Enforcement. Four days later, I'm taken to court with a established court date. Now, let me tell you about due process. I'm not an attorney, and I don't know if anybody in this room is, but with regard to due process, if you're asked to, to, to access the building, to do a Code Enforcement if you're asked to, to, to access the building to do a code enforcement visit, God bless you. Come on out, visit my property, do, do what you need to do. I didn't deny, and I have this on tape. I have the, the, the inspection on tape, I have the phone calls to the investigator, uh, the code enforcement, uh, person on tape. I did not deny them access, I allowed them into my property, I passed the inspection. Yet, the city attorney, our very city attorney, said to me in court, and I'm paraphrasing. Um, there was no evidence to this case, there's no grounds to take me to court, but yet I had a court date established in the original piece of correspondence, and that violates the due process, the Fourteenth Amendment. To go on to this issue, she said to me, well, I asked her, why are you taking me to court? Why can't we discharge this at this very moment? She said, quote-unquote, "Because I can, I'm gonna ask for twelve months' supervision." Based on what? Now, I've been here before, on this before, and I handed a, a tape to, uh, Clerk Golick with regard to the two thousand and seven incident, when I, when I was involved with code enforcement. Ladies and gentlemen, your city is out of control. This, I'm sorry? May I continue?
Uh, if you can finish up in like sixty seconds.
I'll work this very quickly. I had no violations to my property, okay? And again, as a landlord, I'm sharing with you, I pay higher taxes. As a landlord, uh, I pay for code enforcement. The bottom line at hand here, ladies and gentlemen, if you don't control this department, you're gonna be facing a federal lawsuit. That's an ounce away. So whoever has the authority in this body of land, of body right now, you need to control code enforcement because they are, are out of control. Any questions?
Thank you. Next speaker is Nakima Moore.
Hello, my name is Nakima Moore. I live on one hundred and sixty-six, um, Harrison in Hammond. This was my first meeting, my first.
You live where?
On one hundred and sixty-six in Harrison.
Oh, in Harrison.
Yeah.
You live in the sixty-six hundred block of Harrison, not one hundred and sixty-six.
Well, one hundred and sixty-six in Harrison.
Just wanted to make sure we knew where you live.
Um, this was my first council meeting today. You know, me and my husband decided that we would come to this council meeting and see what was going on in our community and, you know, see what the, the council members do and, and how this works. And I'm actually surprised and shocked at some of the information that was going back and forth today. The lack of non-compassion for people that you're supposed to work for is ridiculous. These people sat here and cried out their hearts to you, pretty much, and you still said, this is how it's gonna go. I personally don't do yard sales, nor do I personally care whether somebody else do two or three yard sales. It's not that important. And to sit and to actually have a whole session on how many yard sales that somebody can have when we need jobs, we need, people need money for food, people need everything. They living in broke-down homes, they need new roofs, they need all type of stuff. You complaining about yard sales?
You gonna make me shout.
That is ridiculous. That makes absolutely no sense at all to me. It's so many more important things to worry about, and we're focusing on yard sales. And I don't do yard sales, nor do I care who wants to do a yard sale. I stop at it. It just makes no sense. And I, I'm personally, that all this has done was inspire me to fire me up, to personally change my representative, to go out on my block, to tell my neighbors that I all know that she's not working for us, or he not working for us. That's pretty much it. That's pretty much what I'm gonna have to do. Because it absolutely makes no sense that we gonna take up a half an hour to an hour on who can have a yard sale and how many you can have. That's so stupid. When I got neighbors that's laid off, when I know people who need clothes, who, who, who go to my church every day on Friday morning and stand outside in the line to get clothes, we fighting over yard sales. The one thing that they can get clothes that they need for cheap is, is nonsense. And we sat here and wasted time on nonsense. And this is what I came out for, to see how this worked, and I heard nonsense. That's what I'm paying for. Nonsense, that's ridiculous. Waste of my time, should be a waste of yours. Thank you.
Next speaker is Carolyn Jackson. Come on down.
Good evening again. It really saddens me to sit and to listen at so many people come up here and cry out and explain how important it is for them to have their yard sales, how they look forward to it, not only to get rid of things to make money, but to purchase things as well. You know, we are all human. We all make mistakes. We're human because we are subjected to not being perfect, 'cause that's how we were made. But the difference between a girl and a woman, a boy and a man, is that a man and a woman know how to step up and say, I made a mistake, and make a change. But to be stubborn and to not yield to your constituency, to your constituents, your people, these people sitting here, these people have come here, they have spent time out of their day because they feel they have been wrong to express to you what they need, what their friends and family need, and not one of you to make a change. It's very disheartening. You were elected to do a job, one that would benefit everybody, not just you, not just your neighbor next door. I'm not a fan of having a yard sale every day, and I will never be a fan of having a yard sale every day. But doggone it, I'm not gonna stand up here and I'm not gonna ridicule and laugh, leave out the room when people are standing here and they're talking and they are serious, tears in their eyes, you can see the, how serious they are. And you basically tell them, too bad, I'm not changing, what it is is what it is, have a nice day. You know, this is not the kind of people that I think you are. But this is certainly the type of people you portrayed to everyone here and everyone who's on TV, I mean, who's sitting at home in their living rooms listening at you, as one who doesn't care about anybody or anything but what you want to do. And you don't, you're not willing to change, you're not willing to work for your people. Thank you.
Next speaker is LaVern Graham. Is it LaVern Graham? She left? Okay, next speaker is Alex Andrade. Am I pronouncing your last name correct?
Andrade.
Andrade.
Against, uh, the, of a police officer, Sergeant Phil Kazia of the Hammond Police Department. And he's been, actually, for the past two weeks now, he's been, uh, interfering with my campaign and my, my mom's campaign. And he's, the problems all started when he, uh, he had seen a, a sign of my mom's at his house, at his, uh, relative's house at seventy-one twenty Montana Avenue in Hammond, Indiana. He stated to my mom that he, uh, that no one at that home gave authorization for the sign and that, uh, that, uh, we had records of everyone who asked for a sign and we took down their name and phone number and address. And he still decided he didn't wanna look at anything. We have videotapes of the way he acted towards us, and he actually had, he was going door-to-door with people with our signs and, uh, intimidating them to take our signs down, and he actually decided to put some of our, a couple of our signs into his squad car, it's issued by the police department, while in uniform, and bring them back to us the same day, saying that we were putting them at houses that we had no permission from, and we have all the addresses and names of people that asked for them. And that is it.
I don't understand that, that's kinda complex there. Um, next speaker is Ray, Ray Fletcher. And Larry, you'll be after Ray, so if you can move forward. Ray, after Ray, Larry.
Yes, sir. Good evening. Certainly, you can tell it is an election year, and certainly you can tell who the McPuppets are and who the lapdogs are. I will say this, I think it's reprehensible, and I hope the people watching online, at home, and too bad the newspaper didn't do it, and I hope you take note of this. The four individuals that said, no, you cannot come up here and comment, no, you don't matter to us. You know, people took time out of their lives to contribute, and I commend the five of you that opened up discussion for people to comment on this issue. During the caucus, one of the, one of your citizens raised issues with the, uh, claims form, how, uh, how something was submitted. This individual has their hand in the coff, in the city coffers numerous times for numerous things. Yet, when your own policies said how you play, pay claims, you did not follow the rules that you outlined for yourselves. Now, I may not agree with you guys all the time, you know, and I may argue ahead with you, but this, seriously, is reprehensible. You have guidelines of how you pay bills. You submit a claim, you submit everything's with it, and the gentleman brought it to your attention, he even said his commission, his commission didn't even approve it. But you went ahead and approved it anyways. And then you got people coming up here, they're talking about this is their only source of income, being able to do the garage sales. And you guys are saying, you know what? I don't care. You don't matter. I get my orders from someone else. You know, those of you that voted against this can't even give me the courtesy and respect of looking at me when I talk, while I sat and watched you get up out of the room while these people were up here pouring their hearts out. Doggone right, it's an election year, and I pray to God, I pray to God that this citizens of this great community stand up and say, you know what? I'm fed up with this nonsense. This is romper room what happened here tonight. You should be ashamed of yourselves, absolutely ashamed of yourselves. You call yourselves councilmen and women? Who are you representing? Yourself, this administration? Then you're gonna talk in, in, in this ordinance. Uh, you have, you can have more than one, you can have it for two years, two days, but come to the Board, Board of Works. For the first one, for one yard sale, garage sale. Okay, so you're gonna tell the old lady that came up here and shared her story. You're gonna tell the person whose mother just died, whose father just died, they're trying to have them the state sale. Oh, you gotta go to the Board, Board of Public Works. I'm trying to plan a funeral for crying out loud. I'm not worried about that. You got one thousand dollars a month, twelve thousand dollars a year. You got people in this city that earn seventy, eighty, ninety thousand dollars a year, and this little old woman, twelve thousand dollars a year she earns. And she could only have one garage sale, one yard sale. What are you gonna say? To heck with her medication, to heck with her NIFCO bill, to heck with her getting gas for her car, she can go to her doctors. And, and groceries are going up, her income's not going up, these people aren't going, income going, going up. You know, I, I, I am a Clinton fan to the end, and, and Hillary Clinton always talks about, it takes a village. The village came out. The village came out. And four of y'all, just five of y'all, just don't care. You know what? Honest to God, honest to God, guys, I feel sorry for you, I really do. Because, you know, you got little kids, you, you got people in the community, people that wanna grow up and get involved in politics, and this is the example you're setting? This is the kind of role model you wanna be? I mean, for crying out loud, we got people sitting here double-dipping, we got people sitting driving city vehicles. They gotta, they have fantastic time falling up at the city trail, but they can't afford it. These people can't afford to pay for basic things. Thank God it's an election year, and I pray to God that everybody sees this nonsense and sees this little romper room crap that went on, and I hope that they make the right decision.
Well, taken, thank you. Larry. Rapchak.
Yes. Larry Rapchak of the First District. Um, at the risk of going on too long about this particular topic, um, the young lady, Nakima, who came here, very eloquently put, very, but she gives me an insight of what it's like to step in for the first time and see what's actually going here. She came here with her high hopes and then saw the way things went tonight, and that's great, now she's more inspired to go out and work. I salute that, I think that's fabulous. Um, but now, just so you know, this public expression is now the, the time when we get to come up here and spin our wheels uselessly. It makes us feel good, but it's useless. Because even when you gave us the time to come up here and address you and try to sway you beforehand with, with the stories of these people, the very human stories of these people, that didn't even do any good. So believe me, this will do no good either. But that's just the process we have. And frankly, I, I respect the process and, and am grateful for the opportunity to be able to speak to you. However, um, you know, I'm, I'm a rather conservative person, I try to balance the compassionate needs with the practical needs and the common sense needs. And there's, I don't see the common sense in this, folks. I just don't see the common sense with what you heard tonight. It doesn't, it defies, it defies logic, it defies good sense, what you guys did tonight. It really doesn't. After what you've heard, now, and when Councilman Kowinski goes back and quotes his, his ordinance and discusses the structure and the language of it, it still sounds unconvincing. You didn't even seem that convinced of it yourself. You see, it seems vague, and what is the criteria for to get, to get our first garage sale? What's the criteria that the Board of Works is gonna use? It's so vague. It's, you know, who's going, and then, then when you go back for your second or third, because you gotta pay the rent, or because gas price is up to six dollars and you gotta have your second or third, well, what's the criteria that the Board of Works is gonna use? Who's gonna control that? This just seems to, to not only be a huge intrusion of government bureaucracy, it seems to defy common sense. And the five of you who dug your heels in stubbornly tonight in the face of all of this and said, no, we're gonna stick with it. What's controlling you? I mean, what, what's dictating that? It certainly isn't common sense, and it certainly isn't compassion. And if I may address, uh, Councilman Kowinski's, uh, analogy about the person who's driving seventy miles per hour. Okay, fine, I get it, but the point is, okay, if, and I agree, you can't have people who are abusing this. Why common sense would dictate, if you're going to establish this, this rule, this law, that it deal with the people who will abuse? And have the five, have the garage sales that go on for three weeks at a time and have ten of them a year? You've got to, that's where you go. You don't penalize all the other people. And in fact, so to use the analogy, okay, because one guy or two guys are going seventy miles an hour, you don't make all the rest of us apply to the Board of Transportation to go out and drive our car once. You know, every time we wanna drive, if we want a time we wanna drive and do the speed limit, just because some joker or two are driving seventy miles per hour and abusing it, you don't put the burden on the rest of us to not be able to use our cars without the, uh, the blessing of, of some committee or other. It defies description, it, it defies logic, guys. It really does. And so I ask you to reconsider it. There's something else that, something not making sense here. There's something beneath the surface, I can't imagine why the five of you are dug your heels in. But it defies, it, it defies logic and certainly defies, uh, good taste, uh, and compassion in the presence of these people who have shown here tonight. And you know they represent a lot more people who feel just like them.
Sharon Ball.
Hello, my name is Sharon Ball. And I've been listening to everybody saying about the yard sale. I find it kinda sad when people were up here talking about the yard sale and you got your council people walking and whispering and talking. You know, that's kinda sad because I look at it like this here. You all have a job, you all get paychecks. A lot of people don't get paychecks. Like the lady said, a lot of people are on fixed incomes and they look at these yard sales as an asset to their money. And I find it kinda sad that you have people on the council because they're not in the condition that other people are. So they get paid, so they can, it's easy for them to say, no, you can only have a yard sale once a year because I get a paycheck, so I don't have to worry about how I'm gonna pay my bills. I don't have to worry about, is my life bill gonna get paid? And I find it very sad that people, and you all got into, got in office because of people like me. We put you all in these offices because we voted for you all, and we voted for you all because we thought that you were for the people. But now, tonight, you letting us know that I'm not for you because I got a job. So if your life bill don't go paid, it's okay, because mine gonna get paid because I have a job. And I think that that's sad. I think that that's really sad, that you all can come and say, you could only have a yard sale once a year because if you have another one, then you have to go to the board to ask, well, can I have another yard sale? It's in my yard, and I'm paying my taxes, so I don't think it's anybody's business how many yard sales I have, if it's in my yard. If my neighbors are not complaining about me having yard sale, what gives you all the right to complain? I'm not understanding this, again. But in my closing, the one thing I would like to say is that the same people, the same five people that voted not to have a yard sale only once a year, I hope that you all never get into position that a lot of other people are in. Because then you'll feel the wrath from this side of the fence. And maybe then it won't be so easy for you all to say, I don't care if you all don't make it. I don't care if your bills don't get paid because mine are gonna get paid. I just hope that those five people never get in this kinda situation because it's not, it's not a nice situation. Thank you.
Wow, all this conversation. Ms. Gray. Anna. Is it Anta? Atia? Say it in the mic for me. Such a pretty young lady.
Thank you. My name is Atia Gray. And I am very interested in government and looking forward to voting one day. I wonder if any of you councilmen would consider a shadow day for young people like me who are interested in public service. I think this would be a great opportunity to form the future of Hammond. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Kitton Gray and I came to appeal to you guys about college bound. My son is a college bound student for the past four years. I've been a resident of Hammond for 18 years and a homeowner and a taxpayer. We've run into a great problem this year because Amir is in a five-year program at Indiana University Bloomington. He is in need of college bound money for an additional year because his program is not a four-year program, it is a five-year program. And I really am at a crossroads not knowing what to do. I don't know if you guys know what the tuition is at IU, but with room and board, we're in upwards close to $20,000 a year and the $8,000 that we really appreciate that comes from college bound really helps out, but it doesn't pay all the bills and we have to supplement that, his whole program. So I'm asking you guys to, I don't know if you can do something about it or if there's a gray area in the city where there's more money, like someone told me about a line seven or a line eight somewhere, where there might be money that can help Amir out. I'm looking for your help. If you guys can contact me and let me know where I can find more money for him to continue there. I don't know if other students have had this problem. I do know that there must be some abundance of money in the program because they now starting offering money for summertime. So if there's additional money for kids to go to school in the summer, those students that need the fifth year, who are in a bona fide five-year program, we're not talking about someone who has slacked off and didn't get his credits. His program takes five years to get a BA. He's required to be a double major in the School of Music. He can't just, like, study music alone. He has to do music and an outside field, which takes five years. So I'm asking for your help. And I didn't come to talk about the garage sale, but that really, really hurt me. My daughter, like, because she's like so moved by it right now, she's like, "Mommy, can we give our one day to someone who needs it? So if someone really needs it, they can have our garage day. Bring your stuff over and we'll put it out and sell it."
Next speaker is Latr- Latricia?
Latisha.
Latisha. Sha- Sha- what's your last name?
Suarez.
Suarez. Say that again. Suarez.
Latisha Suarez.
Say it again.
Suarez. S-U-A-R-E-Z. Suarez.
That's good.
I come this evening because my neighbors have come to me and we have petitions, I have over 70 petitions signed. We, the residents of the First District, are concerned of the new facility in our neighborhood that we found out through construction workers. We are opposed to the recent development in our community while being kept uninformed. We are requesting a meeting with the mayor, councilmen, planning and development, zoning department, and a representative from this new facility. We can be contacted at the addresses listed below. It's come to our attention that at the address of 4007 Sheffield Avenue, the former St. Joseph Boys Carmelite Home, that they are putting a mental health facility at this location. On a recent flyer that we received, Councilman Kowinski, you stated in there that you are a licensed mental health administrator and we're wondering if this is the reason for this being put in there without our knowledge. Once again, also, I'd like to thank those councilmen that were here today that voted in our favor here of the people on the garage sale. When it was reiterated one more time about the ordinance stating that it was not just one day, but two days, it is still listed as two consecutive days. That does not mean we can have one one week and then have one another. I think this is what the people are trying to come across by saying. And I thank you, councilmen, that stood up for us and acknowledged our concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alvin Cheeks, next speaker.
Alvin Cheeks, agent on Block of Merrill. My first thank you is to the council in regards to the chess tournament. We had the opportunity to have Prince Ibiza in there from Nigeria. We had the opportunity to have Jermaine play chess, who's a 13-year-old licensed pilot, the youngest pilot in the United States. Although too, I'd like to thank the college bound students who, not only did they help with the tournament, they helped a young guy read. I think under seven and eight, what she was talking about, my recognition to the council share percent, which is line item number seven and line item number eight is a 30% that belongs to the Hammond City Council. All you have to do is do $50,000 each council in that event. The other thing that I like to talk to is that we were there on the day of the chess tournament, we had Grandmaster Parham, the only man living in the United States that had the opportunity to beat Bobby Fischer. The great thing about Mr. Parham is that he had to arrive in an AMLAMs, he got amputated. And I think that was the most awesome experience, that he didn't want anybody to know that he had lost his legs. So he did come out and play chess and we had to carry him out in a chair because he sat so long playing chess that he could not move, but he didn't want to be taken out in a wheelchair or for the fire department to help him. He wanted to go out like that. So I do appreciate Mr. Parham who's watching via cable tonight. The other hat that I'm going to put on tonight is as a commissioner. I swore to take an oath before Clerk Golick, I swore before the American flag, I put my hand on a Bible, which I was taught by my grandparents and my great grandparents, Ben Hendricks, that when you swear before God and your beliefs that you uphold something, you uphold it to the thing. I brought it before the city council and I'd like to thank Kim Poland who bagged me up on that. If I take an oath to do something, I'm going to do that whether it's liked or not liked. You know, I'm not, you know, caring who the individual is or the company, it's about being impartial to what you swore to an oath. So that is the only thing. I told the council that I would represent them in a fine way and I told the mayor I would represent them in a fine way. Also too, I represent my son and my family. So I would just like the council to know that if it comes before me and it's not right, regardless of what company it is, regardless of what individual, I'm not just going to look the other way or, I went out to a family's house where they were getting in trouble about their baby crying with the landlord. So I'm not going to not go to a house where a baby's crying and the landlord wants to evict somebody or wherever it leads me, you know. The reason why the chess tournament ended up being on the 16th is that was the day that my brother was killed by a SWAT team in East Chicago. You know, most people didn't know that I had a brother that was an habitual criminal and, you know, he robbed the East Chicago Police Department property room just because that's the way it was. So those young people need a college education, they need to be nurtured and the young kids need to see other kids going to college and getting a fine education. The college bound program is a great program. A lot of parents don't, do not have the extra money, you know, to send their kids to USC and Harvard, so they stay within the, in the state of Indiana to get a quality education. So I think this council, one time enacted with Bill Wellman at a time to provide students with a prime education. So why don't we reach out to the Bill Wellmans of Hammond and those individuals to entitle them? So I'm right at three minutes, so I'll leave it at that. Thank you. Oh yeah, I do have the pictures and some of the kids put a council battalion, another of the councilmen in tears. So they did thank you guys and it's, I got thousands of hits on my Facebook, so I do appreciate you guys and they really wanted to thank you. Also too, they played a lot of jokes on me, so I do thank you guys for loving.
Antonio Andrade.
Good evening. I'm Antonio Andrade. I've talked to your councilmen before. I addressed Chico directly. We have a problem, Chico. I'm at 6713 Arkansas. My house gets, keeps getting shot up. Brian Miller knows about it, you know about it, you haven't done anything. Right now I see smokes and mirrors, okay? You want to talk about yard sales and garages, you want to attack Mr. Mark on a lot of the stuff that he has an opinion. I believe in my opinion, as councilmen, if any of us want more garage sales, we should approach our councilmen and ask them, "We want one more garage sale. I need you to approve another garage sale." You guys are public servants and I respect what you explained. I understand exactly what you explained. I would approach us, in any war, I would approach my councilmen and said, "I need one more garage sale." That would be the way I would direct it. Just, I, I'm all for it that it is my property, it's my garage, I can do it when I want it. But if it's an issue, I'm actually defending a lot of you guys because I agree, we can go through our councilmen, we don't have to wait till Thursday and we can get another garage sale. I think that's possible. I think you guys would do it. The other thing is, I find it hard to believe. Bottom line is, you have put up cameras in Hessville. They're supposed to be for what? They don't solve crimes. The last time, on the 19th of this month, three bullet holes came to Alex's bedroom and we have video surveillance of that van driving to Jesse Escobedo's house, your nephew, okay? And the police haven't been able to do anything. What are your cameras for? He drove right through 169th and Arizona. What are your cameras for? What I did notice is I checked your financial records. Midwest Electronics Incorporated in East Chicago is a large contributor of your campaign.
Sir, can you address the?
I am addressing.
Well, I don't want you to.
He's my councilman.
I understand that, but we're not here to badger anyone.
I'm not badgering him, I'm asking him a question.
Let's not be respectful, please.
I am being respectful. I want to know why the police, if you're so close to Brian Miller, have you asked Brian Miller to review those tapes if those camera works? You haven't because Officer, I'm going to tell you exactly his name, Detective Tom Texter told me those cameras don't work. They can't solve the crime of the shooting of my house because none of those cameras work. Okay, that's what you've done in eight years for us in Hessville and you want to complain about garage sales or you want to act like the hero of the garage sales? We also have dumpsters during elections, during elections where all of Maritza's signs are in the garbage. Also Flo, you might want to check those dumpsters. Your signs are in there too. I wouldn't touch them because I don't want to get blamed for anything. But it's kind of weird how Officer Kazaya is helping you eliminate Maritza's signs in uniform. I hope you write Chief Miller. You guys should write Chief Miller.
Thank you. I want to say thanks to my mom and my aunt for coming out tonight and all of you all, you're very important to our city and what you expressed tonight is well taken, especially by this councilman. So can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Take it. It's been motioned by councilman, and the host and second by Councilman Salinas that we adjourned a meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Motion passes.[1789.51]